Good evening. This is the 85th meeting of the 71st term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Please turn off all cell phones and put them on vibrate. Tonight invocation will be led by Father William Burke of St. Francis of the C.C.'s Parish. After the invocation, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Loving and caring God, as the time is near to celebrate the goodness of St. Patrick, may we be mindful of his words of thanksgiving. Through the strength of heaven, the light of the sun, the radiance of the moon, splendor of fire, speed of lightning, swiftness of the wind, depth of the sea, stability of the earth, firmness of the rock, may we entrust our service to your guiding heart and hand. Here are prayers tonight for the city of Baltimore, for all our citizens, that our city may become for all of us a really human community, a city of peace. We pray for a growing safety in our streets and communities, that no one's life should be endangered by another's carelessness, and that our children may not meet with accidents. We pray for all who have not yet got a home of their own, for those who are badly housed, for all immigrants, that they may be received with hospitality. We pray too for those who live in luxury, that they may keep their homes and hearts open to those in need. With these daily concerns, guide us gently to serve you and all in Baltimore with charity and justice, respecting human dignity. With St. Patrick, may your love be our shield and our strength. Everybody say?
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Father Burke? Father? I want to thank Father Burke for that invocation. The clerk will call the roll of the members.
President Young, Kraft, Kern, Spector, Holton, Welsh, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark. Mr. President, we request.
Thank you. Tonight's showcase Baltimore presentation is John Berkeley, President of the National Pan-Hellenic Council, Metro Baltimore. He will talk about the great work of fraternities and sororities and the Divine Nine coming together to improve the lives of Baltimoreans. Thank you.
Thank you, President Young. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council, citizens of Baltimore. The National Pan-Hellenic Council, or NPHC, was founded in 1930 at Howard University by five of what is now called the Divine Nine organizations. The council here in Baltimore, the Metropolitan Baltimore Council, was rechartered in 1984. And since that time, we have been doing all we can to make sure we not only project the best that we have of the fraternity sororities in Baltimore, but also that we're also looking out for the interests of the communities in which we serve. You may have seen us individually in our particular colors at various events, but when you see us under the black and white of the Pan-Hell, that is when we are coming together under our collective voices to show our strength and our unity in the things that we do in promoting the Black fraternity sororities here in the Baltimore metropolitan area. Some places where you may have seen us, most recently here in downtown Baltimore, we were a strong force at the mayor's back of the school rally right out here in the plaza. We've also been involved with the Prostrate Cancer Walk in Towson, the Susan B. Coleman Walk in Hunt Valley. This past month, in February, for the first time, we came together collectively and had the Blanket Baltimore Project, where we collected blankets, suits, gloves, hats for the homeless. And we gave those to various organizations that took care of the homeless and advocacy. This was the first time we've held this event, and 10 events benefited from that particular event. At the end of February, we also had the, what we call our game night, because again, we also realized that in order to work together, we also have to play together. So we got together with various members, different members from the various chapters, and played old school games we played when we were growing up. Because our thing is, again, during that time, we learned a lot about the various organizations, individual people, things of that nature. We also took up a collection for the St. Jude's Children's Home, which a lot of our organizations are involved with now. And we were able to, just by passing the hat, collect over $200 that we forwarded to the St. Jude's organization. So again, we're not here to take the place of those organizations, those Black fraternity sororities, but we are here to support them in all that they do to help make Baltimore, Baltimore great, and also to help promote the fraternity sororities. Thank you.
Thank you. And we want to thank you for all the great work that y'all do. And thanks again for coming, and keep up the good work. It is the council custom to generalize the invocation. I ask for motion to generalize the prayer. Chair recognizes Councilman Kern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Father Burke was so kind to come in to fulfill the obligations of the council, to have the meeting before the St. Patrick Day celebration, with a resolution passed decades ago, to have a member of the School Sisters of Notre Dame, but sometimes it's hard to find another School Sister Notre Dame member. So Father Burke, in his tribute to St. Patrick, was so kind to come here today and give the invocation. I move that the invocation be generalized.
Seconded by Councilman Kern. I'm seconded by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of generalizing the prayer, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have the motion that is adopted. We'll now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of Proceedings from the March 2nd City Council meeting is on the council member's desk.
Is there a motion to approve the journal? Motion by Council Vice President Riceinger, seconded by Councilman Welch. All those in favor of adopting the journal, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion currently, journal is adopted. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Riceinger.
President, at this time, I move to generalize the state of the city address given by Mayor Stephanie Rollins Blake at the special meeting of the City Council Committee of the whole on March 9, 2015.
Seconded by Councilwoman Middleton. All those in favor of generalizing the state of the city address given by Mayor Stephanie Rollins Blake at the special meeting of the City Council Committee of the whole on March 9, 2015, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. The address will be generalized. The Millers can find two communications from the mayor attached to the agenda as Appendix A. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on page 2 to 3 of the agenda. Bill should be introduced.
City Council Bill 15-0488, City Streets Closing a 10-foot alley laid out in the rear of 1701 North Charles Street and a 10-foot alley laid out in the rear of 22, 24, and 30 East Landville Street. Ordinance for the purpose of condemning and closing a 10-foot alley laid out in the rear of a property known as 1701 North Charles Street and a 10-foot alley laid out in the rear of properties known as 22, 24, and 30 East Landville Street, as shown on plat 227A 22A in the Office of the Department of General Services and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Community Development Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0489, Sale of Property, Former Beds of a 10-foot alley laid out in the rear of 1701 North Charles Street and a 10-foot alley laid out in the rear of 22, 24, and 30 East Landville Street. Ordinance for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and City Council of Baltimore to sell it, either public or private sale. All its interests in a certain parcels of land known as the former beds of a 10-foot alley laid out in the rear of property known as 1701 North Charles Street and the 10-foot alley laid out in the rear of properties known as 22, 24, and 30 East Landville Street, and no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Community Development Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0490, City Streets Opening Air Rights Over Portion of Love Grove Street. Ordinance for the purpose of condemning and opening the air rights over a portion of Love Grove Street extending northerly 100 feet from the north side of East Landville Street, as shown on plat 227A 23, and the Office of the Department of General Services and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Community Development Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0491, City Streets Closing Air Rights Over Portion of Love Grove Street. Ordinance for the purpose of condemning and closing the air rights over a portion of Love Grove Street extending northerly 100 feet from the north side of East Landville Street, as shown on plat 227A 23A in the Office of the Department of General Services and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Community Development Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0492, Sale of Property, Air Rights Over a Portion of Love Grove Street. Ordinance for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and City Council of Baltimore to sell, either public or private sale. All its interests in the air rights over a portion of Love Grove Street extending northerly 100 feet from the north side of East Landville Street, no longer needed for public use, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0493, Charter Amendment, Special Elections, Council Vacancies. Ordinance for the purpose of authorizing, under certain circumstances, the filling of council vacancies by special election, conforming, correcting, and clarifying related provisions, and submitting this amendment to the qualified voters of the city for adoption or rejection. Sponsor Henry.
Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. With your permission, I'd like to speak to this bill and the next bill at the same time.
That's good.
Okay, alright. The charter amendment for us right now would allow for special elections for city council members in case of a vacancy. In the just over seven years that I've been on the council, we've had three vacancies. And each time, we've filled that, there have been complaints from the populace at large as to the process, even though the process has changed during that time. I am not putting this in to criticize the individuals who were filled, excuse me, the individuals who took their place in this body as a result of those vacancies and that process, but I would like to take this opportunity to say that clearly, having the council do this itself may not be the best way in order to accomplish what the voters would like accomplished, which is an opportunity to say for themselves who they'd like to represent them. So this charter amendment allows for special elections for district council members. The following one allows for special elections in the case of a vacancy in the office of mayor. That is a much different conversation for us to have, because there have not been the same level of concerns raised over the years to the way that we fill the vacancy in the office of mayor now, which is that the council president automatically ascends to that office. However, if we're going to have a conversation about one, it seems fair to have a conversation about both. We may find that we are comfortable enough with the status quo, that we do not need to move forward. However, I would hope that it would be possible to have this conversation in the context of some of the other conversations that we would like to have around how the mayor and city council work together in the structure of Baltimore city government, and how the city council could work. And I raise that issue to say that in the past, when we have talked about a reconfiguration of the council in terms of changing the number of seats and how the district members are elected, we have also talked about at-large seats, and we have talked about the possibility of a city council where the council itself elects its president, as many other legislative bodies do. In the past, when we've had those conversations in smaller rooms, in smaller groups, the pushback has often been, we would not want to have the city council elect its own president, since the president automatically becomes mayor in case of the vacancy of a mayor in the mayor's office, and it would not be as appropriate for somebody who had just been elected by one district and then selected by the body to be the president to become the mayor automatically, whereas the council president is elected at large by the whole city, with everyone knowing that they could be mayor if anything happens to the mayor. And so this charter amendment allows us to open up that broader conversation, because if the council president did not automatically become mayor in the case of a vacancy in that office, then that is one big obstacle removed to the idea of the council electing its own leader. And so that's the conversation that I look forward to having. I thank the body for its time, and I hope to attend a public hearing on one or both of these charter amendments sometime in my lifetime. Thank you.
This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee. You just read the next one.
City Council Bill 15-0494, Charter Amendment, Special Elections, Mayoral Vacancies. Ordinance for the purpose of authorizing, under certain circumstances, the filling of mayoral vacancies by special election, conforming, correcting, and clarifying related provisions, and submitting this amendment to the qualified voters of the city for adoption or rejection. Sponsor Henry.
This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0495, Zoning, Conditional Use Conversion of a One Family Dwelling Unit to a Two Family Dwelling Unit in the R8 Zoning District, 926 Newington Avenue. Ordinance for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a One Family Dwelling Unit to a Two Family Dwelling Unit in the R8 Zoning District on the property known as 926 Newington Avenue, as outlined in red in the accompanying plat. Sponsor Mosby.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0496, Zoning, Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to a Two Family Dwelling Unit in the R8 Zoning District, variance 1301 North Broadway. Ordinance for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to a Two Family Dwelling Unit in the R8 Zoning District on the property known as 1301 North Broadway, as outlined in red in the accompanying plat, and granting a variance from certain off-street parking requirements. Sponsor Stokes.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee. Resolution to be introduced.
City Council Resolution 15-0207R, Informational Hearing, Park and Open Space Policies. Resolution for the purpose of inviting all interested government officials, institutional leaders, and citizens to appear before it to discuss the status of all activities and planning underway in the city that might contribute to either maintaining the current open space estate or improving and expanding upon it, and to raise issues and questions about governance paradigm for public open space that will ensure that Baltimore has a great and expansive system of public open spaces for the 21st century, one that is of no less vision and grandeur than that which the city had at the beginning of last century. Sponsor Stokes, Costello, Clark, Scott, Kraft, Henry, President Young, Holton, Middleton, Branch, Spector, Riceinger.
Please note, Councilman Welch is co-sponsor. Councilman Mosby and Councilman Kern is co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, colleagues, for co-sponsoring. I just wanted to mention that there's been a group of citizens meeting across district lines over the last several months who are very interested in open space, parkland, maintaining, supporting, making sure that we keep our vision alive on this. Planning and wrecking parks are also aware, and so they are very supportive of having this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to Recreation and Parks Committee.
City Council Resolution 15-0208R, Informational Hearing. I pledge, resolution for the purpose of inviting the police commissioner and community leaders from the 13th district to appear before the council to discuss the establishment of a pilot partnership between the police department and the community to improve neighborhood conditions through the I pledge campaign. Sponsored Branch, Kraft, Stokes, Henry, President Young, Middleton, Clark.
This has been assigned, oh, Chair recognizes Councilman Branch. Please note, Councilman Welch is co-sponsor. Councilman Kern, Councilman Scott, Councilman Mosby as co-sponsors. Chair recognizes Councilman Branch.
Thank you so much, Mr. President.
And Councilwoman Holton.
In my district, there's, we have a lot of problems with loitering in front of households. Some is due to illegal activities. And when the occupants call for police assistance, usually, they would like to be, they would like, they would like to be anonymous, but the police officers may come and knock on the door. I've come up with a program called Our Pledge. This is what it looked like. What happens is that there's a contract between myself, the police officers, and with the community, and they sign on to becoming almost like a good citizen policy. And in reference, we become good servants. What it does is when a police officer sees this placed inside someone's window, then they can immediately, without knocking on the occupant's door, challenge whoever is standing in front of the house without people living inside the houses being in fear of any retaliation. Thank you.
Alright, this has been assigned to the Public Safety Committee.
City Council Resolution 15-0209R, Women's Her Story Month, Weaving the Stories of Women's Lives. Resolution for the purpose of recognizing March as a Women's History Month, celebrating the 35th anniversary of Women's History Movement, and urging all Baltimoreans to reflect on the theme of this year's event, weaving the stories of women's lives, as well as the importance of acknowledging the critical role that women of every race, class, and ethnic background have played throughout history, and the many ways that women's history has become woven into the fabric of our national story. Sponsor Holton, Scott, Costello, Kraft, Stokes, Henry, President Young, Middleton, Branch, Clark, Riceinger.
Please note that Councilman Kern, Councilman Mosby, and Councilman Welch as co-sponsors. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Holton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I thank my colleagues for signing on to this resolution, and March is Women's History Month. In fact, this year marks the 35th year, 35th anniversary of the Women's History Movement. Just as we're working to have a Women's History Museum on the national Capitol, they're returning to the theme of 1987, weaving the stories of women's lives, because women in every race, class, and ethnic background are part of the fabric of our history, that history that is recorded and that history that is not recorded. So whether we're talking about relevant issues of today, like equal pay for equal work, domestic violence, human trafficking, these are issues that impact women more so than men. And they're real issues that impact our economy, that impact the very nature of who we are as Americans. Tomorrow, March 10th, is National Women and Girls HIV/AIDS Day. And to all the women here and listening, tomorrow's Rock Your Red Pumps Ladies' Day. So ladies, please rock your red pumps in support of National Women and Girls HIV/AIDS Day. In March, it's Women's History Month. It's a way to make a mark and to understand the significance and the importance of our role to the fabric of America. So I thank my colleagues for signing on. And Mr. President, I'd like to move for suspension of the rules.
Seconded by Councilman Stokes. All those in favor of suspending rules, say aye. All opposed, nay. The motion carries. Chair recognizes Councilman Holton.
Mr. President, I'd like to move for an immediate adoption of this resolution.
Seconded by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye. All opposed, nay. The motion carries. This resolution, 15-0209R, is adopted.
City Council Resolution 15-0210R, Request for State Action, Admission of Prior Assault Evidence in Sexual Assault Prosecutions. Resolution for the purpose of calling on the state of Maryland to adopt a new evidentiary standard in sexual assault cases that would allow for the introduction of relevant prior conduct evidence against perpetrators, just as the current law allows for introduction of some prior conduct evidence against victims. Sponsor Clark, Scott, Costello, Stokes, Henry, President Young, Holton, Middleton, Branch, Spector, Riceinger.
Please note, Councilman Kern, Councilman Kraft, Councilman Mosby, Councilman Welch as co-sponsors, and Councilwoman Clark. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Mr. President, members of the council, this is a resolution supporting our new state's attorney's office in its efforts to balance between evidence in court that is allowed against a victim of sexual assault and the perpetrator presumed of sexual assault. Basically, right now, under current law, sexual assault in a courtroom, evidence cannot be brought up with regard to the past record of the accused. Meanwhile, some information can be about a victim's past behavior, et cetera, can be raised as evidentiary. That's not fair. It's a he says, she says, and we want to even it out so that it's fair on both sides, but frankly, and especially the victims. So I would like to move, Mr. President, to suspend the rules to permit immediate adoption of this resolution, so we can get it down to Annapolis. Let me assure my colleagues that here is Bill 1205 that has been produced in Annapolis reflecting this, and there's another bill also, same idea.
Seconded by Councilwoman Holton. All those in favor of suspending rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. The rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Mr. President, members of the council, I move for immediate adoption of this resolution.
Seconded by Councilwoman Holton. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 15-0210R, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. This resolution is adopted.
City Council Resolution 15-0211R, Opposing Postal Service Privatization. Ordinance for the purpose of supporting the American Postal Workers Union in its efforts to protect living wage jobs, and its insistence on the highest possible standards of customer services, opposing efforts to privatize postal operations, and calling upon all residents of Baltimore to consider this issue when deciding whether to patronize Staples. Sponsor Kern, Middleton, Clark, President Young, Scott, Costello, Henry, Holton, Kraft, Stokes, Branch, Spector, Riceinger.
Please note, Councilman Mosby, Councilman Welch is a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Kern.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank all my co-sponsors for this, and I'll speak briefly. I'm going to introduce this resolution for immediate adoption regarding a labor issue for the American Postal Workers Union. It involves a no-bid deal by the United States Post Office Staples, wherein postal workers are not hired to staff mail and counters. The deal undermines labor bargaining agreements by the unions. And we are joined here tonight from the American Postal Workers Union, Mr. Johnny Martin, please stand. That's the acting president, Cecilia. Cecilia here tonight, okay? We have Courtney Jenkins, who is the recording secretary, Richard Shelley, who is the special assistant to the president, and we also join by our good friend, Mr. Tony Greco, the president of Metropolitan Council AFL-CIO Unions. The knockoff post offices in Staples are replacing real post offices across the country. The post offices in Staples are not staffed by the highly trained U.S. Postal Service employees, who sworn to protect the sanctity and security of the mail and are accountable to the American people. Staples closed over 170 stores in the last year with no notion of accountability to the public, so who knows if they're going to close up any stores that have these post offices. The Staple deal is replacing living wage jobs our communities need with low-wage jobs and threaten thousands of goods, family wages, and union postal jobs. Mr. President, my council members, I believe that we need to join the host of other cities who have supported this resolution, and I move for immediate adoption of city council. I'm going to suspend the rules so that we can immediately adopt this resolution.
Seconded by Councilwoman Spector. All those in favor of suspending rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. Rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Councilman Kern.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move City Council Resolution 15-0211R, favorably from the city council.
Seconded by Councilwoman Spector. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 15-0211R, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. This resolution is adopted. Did you want to speak to it, Councilwoman? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Mr. President, members of the council, I stand to applaud my colleague on taking the lead on this issue, but I did want to say a couple of words about it. The United States Postal Service is an absolute essential part of our nation, our city, our state. The workers are decently paid, and we rely on them day after day after day. What's happening at Staples is this, the beginning of the end, if we are not careful. Staples is opening mini postal stations, but not staffed by postal workers. Staffed by Staples employees at minimum wage, or $8 an hour, who, once they're there, replace postal workers. So what do we care? I care a lot, because every day, a postman or woman comes to my door and delivers the mail. Every week, I'm at a post office that I know will be open because it's a public institution in the hours that it says, and will take good care of my packages, and will not cost me an arm and a leg. What my colleague has said is true. If they can close Staples stores, they can open postal stations, replace postal workers, and close them down. So this could be the beginning of an end, but we will not let that happen, and I am pleased and proud to support my colleague and all of us, and we've been at this for years now, fighting to keep this service alive and to understand that the reason the finances and the postal department don't work is that the Congress of the United States has required 50 years, I think it's 50, I might be wrong, more than you can imagine years of prepayment of retirement benefits. you can imagine years of prepayment of retirement benefits, more than even the city of Baltimore in the Finance Department says is necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Amen.
City Council Resolution 15-0212-R, saluting heroes and heroines of Baltimore City's Ice Age ordeal. Resolution for the purpose of thanking our city workers and citizens for heroism and patience in enduring the current and ongoing Ice Age ordeal of this most unending of winter seasons. Sponsor Clark, Kern, Specter, Kraft, Stokes, Costello, Riesinger, Middleton, Holton, Henry, President Young, Scott, Branch.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark. Please note, Councilman Welch is a co-sponsor.
Mr. President.
You got me on it.
Mr. President, members of the council, we have gathered here today to honor the frontline and leadership of the people who have seen us through, and we hope it's over, and we're counting on you for that, who have seen us through the Ice Age of 2014/2015. Beginning of February 14th about, bad weather became Arctic, and every day brought another kind of plague of weather upon the city of Baltimore. Yes, other cities suffered more, like Boston, for example, but no city exceeded Baltimore in the dedication and hours and endless, endless efforts of our Department of Public Works, our Department of Transportation, who are especially here to be honored this evening, but also let's remember very well our fire, our police, our EMS operators, our 311 operators, and also the residents, the residents, who have lived through it all but have been much too busy trying to get water back on or to get water out of the cellar or whatever, to say thanks because that's our job. And I'm glad that we are honoring our job tonight, and I would like to call out, if I may, and ask them to stand as I call their names. Just stand, it's all right, you don't have to make a speech.
Councilwoman Clark, was you moving for floor privileges?
I will in a minute. First, I'm going to ask them to stand, and then I'm going to ask everybody to come up on the floor to get a citation. So from the Department of Public Works, the Director Rudy Chau, and the Director of the Bureau of Water, Waste, Water, Kumasi Vines, Tanya Simmons, she's here, Amy Purvis, Anthony Galloway, Robert Cookley, Gary Moore, Anthony Stevenson, Johnny Moore, Larry Price. Who did I not call? Mr. Smith. Thank you. And who else is not, all right, from DOT, William Johnson, he's not here, he couldn't be, but Frank Murphy, all right, Richard Hooper, Robert Branch, Brent Hooper, John Habbidge, Kenneth Ching, Sharon Gatling, who have I not called? Who's that? Who's that?
Dale Thompson.
Dale Thompson. Okay. Dale, I am so sorry, after all these years, and I even got you the flower. Okay. So, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to extend floor privileges for the presentation of resolutions.
Second by Council Vice President Riesinger, all those in favor of extending floor privileges, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Your guests may take the floor.
Thank you. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, we have resolutions here for the people that have been named, and if we don't, we'll get them to you tomorrow. You know how that is, it's government, what can I tell you? Thank goodness you're the ones on the streets doing the work, and I'm the one here missing a couple resolutions. I will read one, they're all read the same, except each one has an individual name, of course. I will read Mr. Chow's, if I may, Mr. Chow. And come on, step in here. You're always getting beat up about these water bills, but today we're here to thank you. Oh. Mr. Chow, this is my colleague.
I love you all.
I know. All right. The City Council of Baltimore Resolution, be it hereby known to all that the City Council of Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to Rudy Chau in recognition of heroic public leadership in the Ice Age ordeal of February, March, 2015. The entire membership extends best wishes on this memorable occasion and directs this resolution be presented on this ninth day of March, 2015. And it is a resolution sponsored by myself, signed by President Bernard Jack Young, but co-sponsored by all members of this city council with our gratitude and thanks for your service. Oh, and Linda, oh, Linda Foye, oh, I forgot, Lynda, you've got your flower, but I forgot to call your name. Okay. Mr. Chow, this is yours. And then I have one for almost everyone here. Mr. Vine?
Yes.
This is yours. Ms. Purvis? I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Mr. Galloway? Mr. Cookley? Gary Moore?
We just take it from up here. We bring the camera here, and we just take it.
There's two.
I'll just ask them to.
Anthony Stevenson. Johnny Moore. Larry Price. William, oh, Mr. Johnson's not here. Gary Moore, there is no Gary Moore. Frank Murphy. Frank? Thank you, Frank. Richard Hooper? Robert Branch?
Brent Hooper? John Habbidge? Sharon Gatling? Now, I know, I'll be short here. Can we get a picture?
Yeah, all of them need to come up.
All right, everybody, please come up, and let's get a picture. And if you can, please hold on, and we can make a picture. Please. Anybody? 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 Hey, Dale, you're going, Dale, you're going to have to come out and go up front.
Hold up, hold up, hold. No, Dale, just slide over a little bit, right there where they can see you. Smith, you need to slide over a little bit, too. Not in front of her. Can you see everybody? Okay.
Yeah. Still doing the consent, just the top part, just this part. We're striking this out.
Oh, I knew that. I knew that. I knew that, because that should have been over here. We're still in the council meeting. You can find the consent count in Section A at the back of the agenda. It's their motion to approve the consent count. Motion by Councilman Kern, second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of approving the consent counters, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. The count is approved. We'll now move to...
Councilwoman reported actually adopting this resolution.
Oh, she didn't?
No, she didn't.
Oh.
She did report.
Okay, we need a motion to adopt Resolution 15-0212R. Wait a minute, wait a minute. There she goes. See, when y'all do these kind of things, just those things off. She already suspended the rules. She suspended the rules.
Who's to adopt the resolution?
Second by Councilman Kern, all those in favor of approving the resolution, 15-0212R, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. This resolution is adopted. We'll now move to Bills on Second Reader, executive appointments.
EA 15-0270, Rebecca Woods, Executive Director, Environmental Control Board.
Chair recognizes Councilman Welch.
Mr. President, the committee held a hearing on Wednesday, March 4th, and I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Scott, all those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries. This nomination is confirmed. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Mr. President, members of the council, pursuant to Rule 10-3, I make a motion to petition Bill 120121 out of committee.
Second by anybody? Second by Councilman Branch, all those in favor of petitioning the bill out of committee, say aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
President Young?
No.
President Young, no. Kraft? Kraft, no. Scott? Scott, yes. Kern?
Mr. President, my colleagues, I'd like to comment here since the bill was in the Health Committee. It was introduced back in two and a half years ago. I wouldn't move the bill until, or even have a hearing until I was insured by the Health Department that the sanitarians were uniformly administering the law or the code. There was too much discrepancies from one health inspector to the next health inspector the next month, or six months later, found something different from the first one. So when they got the handhelds, they were now uniformly administering the code. The bill had a hearing on October 3, 2012, had a work session January 29, 2013, had a work session September 9, 2014, had a work session November 25, 2014, had a work session December 16, 2014, had a work session, voting session on January 6, 2015, had a work session, voting session on February 24, 2015, and reached this afternoon, had another voting session. This bill has been thoroughly vetted in the Health Committee, and I want to thank the members of the Health Committee for participating. Then I want to thank the Restaurant Association for participating. But, Mr. President, I know that the gentleman from the Second District has taken the extraordinary measures to do this, and as Chair of the Health Committee, I'm favorable with it, and I vote yes.
Kern, yes. Henry?
Mr. President, I just want to take one moment to explain my vote, and that is that I am voting yes in deference to the Chair of the committee, who would like to see this bill come out of his committee, and I think that I would like to respect the Chair's wishes at this time. So I vote yes.
Henry, yes. Specter? Specter, no. Middleton? Middleton, yes. Mosby? Mosby, yes. Holton? Holton, no. Welsh? Welsh abstaining. Riesinger? Riesinger, no. Costello? Costello, yes. Stokes? Stokes, no. Branch? Branch, yes. Clark, yes.
Nine ayes, six nays, and one pass. I mean, eight ayes, six nays, and one pass. Chair recognizes Councilman Kern.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am asking the clerk to distribute... Oh, they need the bill copied back. Hold on. Here, that goes back there. I have the, through all the work sessions we've had, we had a history of work sessions of this, and I can repeat that, but we do have amendments that the committee have worked hard on, and working with the Health Department and the Restaurant Association and the sponsors and with other council members, we come up with the amendments, the original first reader copy, and I'm going to ask the clerk to distribute the amendments that we have come up with. And after he distributes the amendments, I'm going to ask him to distribute the interlaid copy, which I know I've sent to the council members a few weeks ago, with all the amendments into the bill. This is the interlaid copy, and I have more addition to that. I know this is an unusual step, Mr. President, but we've been working on this for a long time, and I did not want to see the committee's work go for naught. The committee's structure is that we all participate in our committees we are assigned, and the committee did its work, and I thought that the bill needed to come to the floor to let the wisdom of the entire council make a decision on this, rather than just a few of us in the committee. So that being said, I'm going to move the amendments... Oh, Paul?
City Council Bill 12-0121, Food Service Facilities, Public Notice of Inspection Grades, ordinance for the purpose of establishing a program for grading and posting the results of food service facility inspections, accepting certain types of facilities from this program, providing for the issuance of grade cards to be posted on the facility's premises, visible to the general public, providing for the posting, providing for the public posting of inspection grades on the Health Department's website, authorizing a deferral of the grade card postings pending of appeal of inspection results, correcting, clarifying, and conforming related provisions and generally relating to the regulation of food service facilities.
Chair recognizes Councilman Kern.
Thank you, Mr. President. What the committee members have on their desk is, I have it on my desk, you taking it, too? Is a list of the 12 amendments that were worked on for a long period of time, and also a copy of that. There's amendments in the interlaid bill, so you would see what the final version is. I've asked the paramontarian, the former paramontarian, let's say, reference, that we can move the amendments as one package, and I'm going to move the interlaid bill. So I'm going to move the 12 amendments that are dated here on the members' desk, that are dated, but the Department of Legislative Reference stamped there for 3/9/15.
Back up, Councilman, you're going too fast. Now, what amendments are you going to move first?
I'm moving the entire package is one.
Okay. Because you said something, two different things.
So I move the entire package dated from March 9, 15, for Legislative Reference, the 12 amendments, I move the favorable, the amendments to the bill.
Second by Councilman Scott, are you moving the bill favorable or unfavorable?
No, this is, this is the amendments first.
Okay.
And I want to ask the council members, the amendments were also in conjunction with the Restaurant Association. The Restaurant Association may have had some problems with the bill, but they at least wanted to have the bill amended to where they could be okay with the bill. So that's what, that's all this work does with the amendments, is to incorporate the amendments from the proponents and the opponents, so they're all happy with the amended bill. So that's what these amendments do.
Second by Councilman Scott, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Thank you. Mr. President, now, the bill is amended, and I'm going to move City Council Bill 12-121 favorably as amended.
Second by Councilman Scott, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please note that Council, roll call.
President Young?
No.
President Young, no. Kraft? President Kraft, yes. Scott? Scott, yes. Kern? Kern, yes. Henry? Henry, yes. Specter? Specter, no. Middleton? Middleton, yes. Mosby? Mosby, yes. Holton? Holton, no. Welsh? Welsh, yes. Welsh, yes. Reissinger? Reissinger, no. Costello? Costello, yes. Stokes? Stokes, no. Branch? Branch, yes. Clark? Brandt, Clark, yes.
Ten yeses and five noes. Let's go to third reader. Third reader, we held one meeting.
City Council Bill 14-0393 Resoning 2700 Rayner Avenue. Ordinance for the Purpose of Changing the Zoning of the Property Known as 2700 Rayner Avenue, as outlined and read in the accompanying plat, from the R6 zoning district to the OR2 zoning district.
Third reader for final passage.
City Council Bill 13-0272 Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to a 23 Family Dwelling Unit in the R8 zoning district, variances 1209 North Road Street. Ordinance for the Purpose of Permitting Subject to Certain Conditions, the Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to a 23 Family Dwelling Unit in the R8 zoning district on the property known as 1209 North Road Street, as outlined and read in the accompanying plat, and granting variances for certain lot area sizes and certain off-street parking requirements. President Young, Kraft, Scott, Kern, Henry, Specter, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Welsh, Reissinger, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 14-0361 Late Night Commercial Operations Multiple Businesses. Ordinance for the Purpose of Repealing Exceptions for Certain Multiple Businesses From the Application. Notice, Objections, and Hearing Processes Otherwise Required to Obtain and Renew Late Night Operation Licenses, Providing for the Application of This Ordinance to Multiple Businesses Previously Licensed Under These Exceptions, Providing for a Special Effective Date and Generally Relating to Licensing and Regulation of Late Night Commercial Operations. President Young, Kraft, Scott, Kern, Henry, Specter, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Welsh, Reissinger, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 14-0453 Baltimore City Landmark List, Olmsted Parkway. Ordinance for the Purpose of Designating the Olmsted Parkway, which consists of the public right-of-ways of the 2600 through 3200 blocks of the Alameda, public right-of-ways of unit through 1800 blocks of 33rd Street, and the public right-of-ways of the 1600 through 3900 blocks of the Gwinns Falls Parkway as historical landmark. President Young, Kraft, Scott, Kern, Henry, Specter, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Welsh, Reissinger, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 14-0466 Resoning 1209 North Road Street. Ordinance for the Purpose of Changing the Zoning for the property known as 1209 North Road Street, as outlined and read in the accompanying plat, from the R7 zoning district to the R8 zoning district. President Young, Kraft, Scott, Kern, Henry, Specter, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Welsh, Reissinger, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 15-0470 Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to a 15 Family Dwelling Unit in the R7 zoning district, 3110 Crittenon Place. Ordinance for the Purpose of Permitting Subject to Certain Conditions, the Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to a 15 Family Dwelling Unit in the R7 zoning district on the property known as 3110 Crittenon Place, as outlined and read in the accompanying plat. President Young, Kraft, Scott, Kern, Henry, Specter, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Welsh, Reissinger, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcements. Committee announcement. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Reissinger. Any committee announcements over on this side? Okay. You go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move for suspension of the rules 10-2.
Second by Councilwoman Holton. All those in favor of suspending rules, announce a hearing, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Mr. President, the Land Use and Transportation Committee will hold a hearing on Bill 15-0477 on April 22, 2015, at 2:00 PM in the council chambers. This is a rezoning of 4526, 4600, 4618, 4620, 4622, and 4624 O'Donnell Street. The committee will also hold a hearing on Bill 14-0439 on April 22, 2015, at 2:05 PM in the council chambers. This is a plan to develop amendment one at the Greed Town redevelopment. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman, um, what's your name? Kraft?
Mr. President, the Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will have a hearing on Wednesday, March 11, 2015, at 5:00 PM here in the council chambers on 150202R, an investigative hearing on municipal composting. This hearing will be broadcast on TV 25. The Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hear Council Bill 150484 Motor Fuel Sales Air Pumps on Tuesday, March 24, 2015, at 9:45 AM here in the council chambers. The Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hear Council Bill 150479 on Tuesday, March 24, 2015. This is a charter amendment on the composition of the Board of Estimates here in the council chambers. The Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will conduct a voting session on Council Bill 120111 Charter Amendment Veto's on Tuesday, March 24, 2015, at 10:05 AM. The Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will conduct a voting session on Council Bill 120114 Charter Amendment Term Limits on Tuesday, March 24, 2015, at 10:10 AM. Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Councilman Kern.
Mr. President, I wanted to take this opportunity during a committee announcement. I failed to recognize all the hard work, a couple of members of your staff, Mr. President, Kara Kunst and Paul Plymouth, for the times that they came to the work sessions on the Restaurant Grading Bill. Uh, I want to thank Legislative Reference, Avery Eisenstark, he was pulling his hair out at 20 minutes before the meeting. So Thaddeus, please, you guys, Legislative Reference, deserved a lot of credit. And Paul Nibber, and Mr. Green, you got to understand that Mr. Nibber, from his first rule baptism of fire, uh, those folks need to be recognized for all their hard work, Mr. President, your staff, and the council services, and Legislative Reference on that Restaurant Grading Bill.
Regular announcements. Chair recognizes, you have a regular announcement, Councilwoman Clark? Yeah. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Mr. President, members of the city council, we have in our packet tonight a veto message from the mayor of the city of Baltimore, who has chosen to veto the Hampden North Residential Permit Parking Bill that was passed by this city council. I was quite surprised, since during the course of our hearings and during the course of over a year, that I worked with the immediate community to the Hampden Rotunda site. The Rotunda site is under development to be mega, mega. And it's surrounded by two-story rowhouse blocks, um, that are up near 40th Street, West 40th Street, across from Keswick Home. And, um, gee whiz, um, it was tough. There were a lot of testifiers, pro and con. It's been very public meeting in the community, because I've been twice to the Hampden Community Council. We've had a petition circulated by volunteers on every single block that was proposed for being in this plan. And if they didn't get 60% approval, they came out of the plans. For example, all of Roland Avenue came out of the plan for that reason. Then we came here, we had a long hearing, people got all kinds of emails, and very kindly paid attention to both sides and voted it out of committee. Voted on second reader, voted on third reader. Nothing yet from the second floor. And then, a week ago Friday, um, I was invited to a meeting with the mayor and the Parking Authority Director. Oh, I brought his report to the committee with me today. It says, "I am here in reporting on Council Bill 14397 introduced by Councilmember Mary Pat Clark. Purpose of the bill is to establish a new statutory residential permit parking program area for the Hampden North area and adopting a public, a parking management plan for the area. The Baltimore City Parking Authority does not oppose the passage of City Council Bill Well, he did them a week ago Friday, behind, um, shut doors. He was like a, a tiger about it. Write a longer letter. Say you'd like an amendment. This is what is in the file. There is no agency that voted against it. There was no agency asked to report that reported anything except it didn't oppose it. It's legally sufficient. And so... I find it a strange thing to, to veto. I mean, usually you have like big citywide things that everybody's angsty about to veto, like cameras for the police. And we heard today, we're going to get them after all. Ban on plastic bags, not enough time. We've spent, we've spent over a year and a half at meetings discussing this program. It began at the, I'm sorry, but I'm almost done. It began when the Rotunda developers began having task force meetings and described the 385 apartments and all the other new restaurants they were bringing into this very site, 11 acres, up cheek to dale with a two-story rowhouse neighborhood. And so basically, people at those meetings from the neighborhood said, gee whiz, we need to extend residential permit parking. They already have it. It just doesn't cover night times and weekends. So this isn't like new, it's an expansion of something that's been there for years. They have seven to seven, weekdays only, there, in most of the blocks in this plan. No, half of the blocks included in this plan. So ladies and gentlemen, two things. I haven't talked to anybody really about override. I have never experienced an override in my years at the city council. Even people who have supported legislation often don't support an override because it's seen as a, you know, a direct response to the mayor. Sure, I'll ask everybody, but my hopes are not high, frankly. So here's what I haven't left with. We know this area is going to be inundated when this Rotunda project finally evolves its way into completion. As that happens, it will be evident to even the most dubious and doubtful of the mayor's advisors that we got a problem. My problem is, it takes, it took a year to go from gee, we need this, to, to go, even more than a year, to go to vote of the city council on third reader. Meetings after meetings after meetings. And so, when this crisis hits, nobody there has a year to spend going back through blocks, getting signatures, getting everybody at City Hall and city government to agree. So, I am kindly going, invited now, thanks to my colleague who sits on that board, to go to the Parking Authority Board to say, to say to them, okay, you wrote this, said that, and now I've got people who have no hope. Therefore, it is the mayor's and the Parking Authority's responsibility. When this happens, as we know it will, we can count apartments, we can count bedrooms in apartments, we can count cinema screens. We know. To turn this project around on a dime with an administrative order for a six-week pilot for RPP in this area when this happens. I'm not introducing other legislations so that we can waste another year. And the reason that we can't just do it from the petition process is that this area is attached to Wyman Park and Roland Park, it's all the same RPP area. We can't get the votes from the blocks to change the hours. We got to split the area to do what we're doing, which is really why we had legislation in the first place. That was a lot of talk about a year and a half of effort on the part of a lot of people, a lot of meetings with Hampden Community, two with Hampden Community Council, one with Hampden Village Merchants, lots and lots of meetings about the issue. Open, always open to whoever wanted to come. That's it, Mr. President. Thank you for giving me the time to present how disappointed I am and the only recourse I feel.
Councilman, we got your birthday, man, we got to give you something. Thank you. We want to recognize Councilman Mosby's birthday, you can give him the gift. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Reissinger.
Mr. President, members of the council, the next meeting of the city council will be held on Monday, March 23, 5:00 PM in the council chambers.
Thank you. There been no further business. This concludes the 85th meeting of the 71st term of the Baltimore City Council. Thank you.